Good morning. We have an invocation from Pastor Rin, is it Schufman, am I getting that right? Wonderful. And he is the pastor at Freedom Fellowship Church.
Good morning. It's an honor to come and pray for our council this morning. Let me pray. Heavenly Father, blessed are you, Lord our God, Creator of the universe. Lord, the scriptures say that I should pray for our leaders and we should often pray for our leaders. So this morning, God, I come to you and Lord, I ask for this council and our great leaders to be blessed and favored, Lord. That, Lord, I ask for your blessing on our nation, your blessing on our great state, and Father, your blessing on our great and wonderful city. Father, that this council would have the wisdom of Solomon, but the heart of David. Father, that you would speak to them, lead and guide them, and help them to hear so that they can lead well, that they are not rulers, but representatives, Father. And Father, when they reach an impasse, like was common even in the founding of our constitution, when a month went by and they could make no headway in governing together, Lord. Benjamin Franklin famously said, "I have lived, sirs, a long time, and the longer I live, the more convincing proofs I see of this truth, that God governs in the affairs of men, and that if a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without his notice. It is probable, then, that can an empire rise without his aid." Father, that this great city cannot be prosperous without your aid. So, Father, the wisdom that they need to guide comes from you and not from man. So, Father, would you speak to them and let them hear you clearly, so that when impasses happen, Lord, like Benjamin Franklin recommended, and they separated for a week and came back together after a time of prayer, they were able to write our constitution. Father, would it also be true for our council that they are aided by the providence of God to hear you, to act in your behest, and today, Lord, that your favor would be upon them? Father, as favors on my life, so must it be on their life. And Father, I don't only pray for their minds, for their wisdom, but for their bodies, Lord. Would you touch them, give them strength in their body? Any illness or disease, would it go right now, in the mighty name of Jesus? And would they have the strength to lead well and the heart to govern people from a place of servanthood? Father, I bless them and I bless our great city, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
I believe we have the pledge of allegiance from Graceland Harold Girl Scouts Troop 3535. Come on down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Graceland. You did wonderful. And thank you, pastor. And with that, now that those two moments are behind us, I would like to move to call to order our city council meeting. And that will take us to item three, which is from the office of the mayor, of which I see no items on our agenda. We will now move to items from council, item four, and I see a resolution approving travel expenses for council members Bradley Carter, Kamal Pennington, and Mark Stonecypher, excuse me, to attend the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce Inter-City Visit 2025 in Nashville, Tennessee, and that will be from October 22nd through the 24th, my favorite month, a little next to my birthday month, that's April, but that's neither here nor there. Shall we see if we have a motion? I have a motion in a second. Cast your votes, councilors. And it would appear that item passes unanimously. Safe travels, councilors. This takes us to item five, City Manager's Report. City Manager Freeman, take it away.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This morning, we have several reports that are on today. The only one that we're going to have a presentation on is from Visit OKC, Zach Craig, the CEO and president at Visit OKC and with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, is going to present their annual report for FY25. We have two other reports on, with three counting claims of payroll. We'll be happy to get any information for you if you have any follow-up on that. And Zach, I'm going to let you present the annual report.
Thank you, City Manager. Council, good morning. It's good to see everyone. Thank you for giving me just a few minutes this morning to present some of our results from fiscal year '25 that ended on June 30th. If we switch over to the next slide, just want to share that it's been an incredible trajectory over the past five years for our visitation economy. You'll see proof of that in this bar chart to the left of the screen that really showcases overnight stays, people coming, staying overnight in Oklahoma City, no matter if they're coming for a convention, sporting event, an equine event, leisure, just trip from Dallas perhaps. So really great growth and got to commend the team back at the office this morning, but certainly want to commend you for your support as we keep forging the path to being a great destination. You know, in addition to just contracting events and bookings for convention center, Visit OKC also is laser focused on increasing the perception of our community. We do that in a number of ways. This example is about earned media. You know, we've got a great communications team with a strategy. We have a PR agency that we work with, Lindsay Vadrine, Jenna Lovelace, really manned that back at our office as well. And what we do is we cultivate relationships, whether they're national publication editors, perhaps in this case, they're freelance writers. Jenna, I want to give you a shout out if you're listening. This was a freelance writer that she cultivated a business relationship with, convinced to come to Oklahoma City. They gave us a great write-up earlier this year in travel and leisure. Another way that we strengthen perception of Oklahoma City is through paid media efforts. This is just a top-line dashboard with some of the results from fiscal '25. You can see all these great impressions, which are fantastic, but what I take a look at is to the right of the screen, really looking at engagements, looking at engagement with some of the creative that's out there, with how many people that are going to our website. More importantly, how many people are following this digital trail all the way to Oklahoma City as well? And so just kudos for the team as they stay laser focused on that. And then finally, from a marketing perspective, we strengthen perception as relates to own content. You know, we do have a production team. We work in partnership with a marketing agency. We push that out in a variety of mediums. You see some call-outs here for social media, and I'm really proud of that team back at the office again. The leadership of our social media team is Miriam and Kiran. They did such a phenomenal job this past year. They actually were deemed the best influencers in the state of Oklahoma by 405 Magazine. So if you see them, please give them a high five as well. I want to move to destination sales and services. You know, on the sales front, this is the convention sales team that books meetings. And why I think it's really pertinent to you all is, in essence, a lot of new audiences that have never been to Oklahoma City that are now coming to Oklahoma City. I mean, when you think about your travels, there's a lot of destinations that you probably would never go to otherwise for a convention or a meeting. And so this really gives us an opportunity to showcase what we do best as a community and just kudos to this team for a job well done in fiscal '25. I've mentioned this already, you know, our largest booking in fiscal '25 is the First Bullet. That's this 2027 Mary Kay Seminar that's coming. That consists of 16,000 total room nights that'll be benefiting the city and creating economic impact in the summer of 2027. So once we book an event or a sporting event as well, we turn that over to a service team. And this service team really does a lot pre-event, boots on the ground during the event, and then post-event as well to drive customer satisfaction and to drive metrics like this First Bullet. You know, we index, what does someone think about Oklahoma City before they come? And then after the event, especially the decision-makers, whether they're meeting planners or the heads of associations, am we really seeing a good index number on that as well? Now, obviously, it's been incredible sporting and sports tourism year in fiscal '25 for Oklahoma City. You know, we all think about the notable events that have taken place, but I wanted to call out some of the other, specifically sports, where we've just done a great job. That includes gymnastics, wrestling, and of course softball year-round, some of the competitions that take place. Not only do they create economic impact for us, but they also create great viewership and broadcast viewership. An example of that was earlier this year in January, we hosted, in essence, the kickoff to the women's gymnastics, really, season right here from PACOM, and we had great viewership from our broadcast partners on that one. Something that I've got to mention is equine and livestock. You know, it's such a revenue generator for us, and in fiscal '25, it was no different. Obviously, with your support and the community support, we welcome the brand-new OG&E Coliseum. One of the events that came shortly thereafter, the opening, was this Appaloosa Horse Club. They had an event for seven or eight days over the need-time period over the Fourth of July. They had a board meeting at the conclusion of their event. I was invited to it and some of the other stakeholders, like Kirk Slaughter. At the board meeting, they discussed and they voted on moving their headquarters from Idaho to stockyards in Oklahoma City. And so I bring that up because probably when voters voted on MAPS4 and the Coliseum, a lot of the effort was to replace an older arena, you know, obviously to enhance quality of life through horse shows and family shows. But it just shows you, as you all know, the positive impacts of MAPS and what it does and the residual positive effects, including relocating headquarters here. So two more slides that I want to talk about, and then I'll rest with any questions, but these two slides are about fiscal '26. We're well within it, and because of the support of the hotel vote and the tax increase last year, you know, we're really laser focused on a full funnel marketing approach in fiscal '26. One example of that is this visual that you see outside of AT&amp;T Stadium in Arlington, Texas. You know, traditionally, we would look at major events. This is an NFL game, before an NFL game earlier this year. We would look at these events and we would geofence this area, and then we push out specific digital ads to the people that frequent NFL games, festivals. We do that and we will do that the upcoming OU-Texas weekend as well. But in addition to that, we've taken a stacked approach. We're working here in this example with a vendor called Carver Ties. They're wrapping their Ubers and Lifts with OKC signage. What you don't see here on the screen is if you're actually a patron, a part of these Ubers or Lifts, there's a QR code inside. You swipe it in partnership with Okana. One lucky winner is going to have a free stay to explore Oklahoma City and Okana. So just one example of some of the initiatives that we've embarked on in FY26. The final slide, there's a lot of copy on this. Unfortunately, I can't take all of them for time, but I do want to highlight the second bullet. I thought you may find this interesting. The Story of Art in America is an Amazon Prime series that we've partnered with. It'll launch next spring, so hopefully you get a chance to take a look at it. But in essence, we're going to own season five of this series. And really, the overarching theme is to highlight some of the communities along Route 66. But for us, we're going to pay kind of homage and highlight some of our local artists. And that's the likes of Stan Carroll. He was the designer of the Skydance Bridge. That's the likes of Kathy Reynolds. She's a proprietor in the 39th Street District. That's our beloved Chef Loretta from 39 Restaurant and the First Americans Museum. And then also, that's Gabriel Freeman in Dees Dwan. They've done so much for our community, but the latest is being the designers of the new Boat People sculpture that's in the Asian District. And so in partnership with Visit OKC, we worked with their production team last week. They filmed all those artists to showcase not only their story, but the story of Oklahoma City. So look for that. That'll be out next spring, and I'm anxious to see the viewership numbers on that. So in closing, I just wanted to share our renewed vision. In our opinions, for our organization, this is where we're going as a destination, and I just appreciate all your support. And so with that, I'll pause with any questions or comments.
Yeah, Zach, I would just like to say thank you so much for all the work that you put into this stuff, your staff. A lot of great new things there taking place with really excellent results, so appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
I agree with Todd. Your work is outstanding. We had a potential group that was wanting to come to Oklahoma City. I called him, his team got together, and they put a program and sent it out to all those prospective people, I mean, in a week. And so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Zach. That's all the presentation that we have. On any other reports, we have the council priority update, quarterly River Sport Foundation update. If you have any questions on those, we can get information for you. That's all that I have.
Thank you, City Manager. And with that, we will move to item six, which is Journal of Council Proceedings. And we have items A and B up for consideration. So for item A, we can take both with one vote, in fact, and we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes, councilors. So suspenseful. And it passes unanimously. That takes us to item seven, and this is any requests for uncontested continuances? Do we have any?
Yes, we have a couple here this morning, starting on page 14. Item 11, I1, unsecured structures. And it's, we just have, all these items will be stricken from the agenda, but it's just the same item on two parts of the agenda. Item C, 2015, Northwestern Avenue, the owner has secured, I'm sorry, 215 Northwestern Avenue, thank you. And then on item 11, J1, abandoned buildings, on page 14, we have item A, 215 Northwestern Avenue, the owner has secured. That's all that we have.
Thank you, City Manager. That will conclude requests for uncontested continuances, uncontested, excuse me. And that will take us to item eight, revocable permits and events. Item A is a revocable permit with the Asian District Cultural Association for our Asian Night Market Festival, and that would be October 3rd through 5th, 2025, in Military Park, 1200 Northwest 25th Street and right-of-way. Looks like that's, oh, Ward 2. And we have a speaker. Steve Lee has signed up. Do you want to come tell us a little bit about that? And you'll state your name and your address, and we'd love to hear about your event.
All righty, well, hi there. I'm Steve Lee. My address is 2415 Northwest 31st Street, part of Ward 2, and I am the Executive Director of the Asian District Cultural Association. You got to hear an amazing piece about our boat project this year from Gabriel Freeman and Jenny Stone, and that is within the Asian District. Super happy to have that in place for our seventh annual Asian Night Market Festival. We're very excited for this, seventh year going into it. I would like to give a little bit of history about this. This started in 2018. This was a one-evening festival in Military Park only, no streets closed. They were expecting about 5,000 people. They had 15,000 people show up, and since then, the festival has now grown to sprawling all across Clasen and closing off streets from 23rd down to 26th, 27th. This festival is now a two-night festival with almost over 100 vendors. We have performers and vendors coming in from out of state, and this is now becoming a festival that is just one of the biggest cultural festivals in the Midwest. We're super excited that this is the seventh year going into it. We have had a lot of success with this, and we think it's a great representation of what we strive for as Asian District Cultural Association. Our mission is to help bridge generations of Asian Americans between generations. So, and doing that between outreach, education, beautification, all these things, we feel like it becomes a culmination of this event where the whole community gets to celebrate and see the diverse culture of the Asian District and beyond, and they get to celebrate that. And I think that it's an incredible feat to be able to have that for the community, and on top of that, it is a free admission for anyone to come and really take in like what we have as Oklahoma. Getting to hear everything from the past presenter and what Oklahoma has in store for us, I mean, really, I feel like this festival is an extension of what we showcase Oklahoma is. It's a landmark. It's a place to come to, to see everything that Oklahoma has, and I think that this is one of those premier events. We're bringing in people from outside. So last year, we had performers from both Nebraska all the way down to Houston. We also had a vendor from San Antonio come in, and this year, we have a talent coming in from Wichita, Kansas to perform. These people are seeking us out, and I'm really excited that they view us as a platform to connect with the community, and that's exactly what we want. We're proud to work with the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber to be able to showcase the differences that we make. For this event, for Night Market Festival, we bring in close to 30,000 to 40,000 people over this span of the two nights. And working with Tammy Fait with Oklahoma City Chamber, she was able to let me know that even like last year with the traffic that comes through the Asian District, we had over almost 13 million visitors come to the Asian District last year, with 4.37 million of those people being first-time visitors to the Asian District through 2024. We do believe that that's just an amazing thing that happens because of not only this event, but because of what the Asian District has become and what people are seeking out. That portion of the 4.37 is up 12% from the previous year. We're so excited that people see the Asian District, that we're on a map, and this festival continues that through promoting all of that and showcasing OKC as an area that is full of culture, and we're proud to be one of the hubs for that. So at that time, I would like to take a pause, and if you have any questions for this year's festival, I'd love to talk about it.
Thank you so much, Steve, for both your presentation and for your work. Councilors, do you have any comments or questions? Well, I can't make the motion, but I'm honored to have you all in Ward 2. I've been on quite the Japanese cinema track this summer. I watched a ghost film called You Get To from 1953 just last week, and my next Kurosawa film, I watched this summer, Seven Samurai. So I'm working my way across the Asian continent and enjoying some cinema. So, councilors, your consideration is our Asian Night Market Festival. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Steve.
Well, thank you very much, Council. Appreciate you guys.
We'll see you soon. All right, that takes us into Ward 6, and a revocable permit for item B with the Mesa Park Neighborhood Association for Mesa Festa. That's going to be September 27th through the 28th, 2025, Pearl Mesa Park, 1900 North Chertel Avenue, and it looks like it's some revenue, $75 there, huh? Interesting. Okay, we have a speaker, Amy Newberry. Would you mind coming up and stating your name and your address and telling us a little bit about your event, please?
Good morning, Council. I'm Amy Newberry. My address is 517 Northwest 17th Street, Oklahoma City, and Ward 6. Mesa Festa, I believe this is our 30th anniversary of the event. The event is growing. We have in the past and will continue to have a beverage garden, food trucks, vendors, but they let the play therapists come talk to the council this morning. So I will report to you that we are rapidly growing and our neighborhoods are only as strong as our community, right? So this year, we opened it up for the children to be able to sign up to be vendors, no cost to them. So this has been wildly successful. So, this has been wildly successful. The children from Wilson Elementary, Classen SAS, Moon, and several other OKCPS schools have been creating art, 3D prints, Taylor Swift bracelets, you name it. It's going to be in our kids' area this year. And I believe that the heart behind that is to let the children have a place that they belong, but also let them carry the torch for the way of the future. So, we are asking for a permit for Mesa Festa. It is a neighborhood event, and we are very excited that we get great weather this year.
Wonderful, and I believe that takes us to Ward 6.
Well, it's very cool to hear about this kind of new element that you all are exploring and the platform for our young people. So, it's a wonderful event every year, and I'm very happy to move for approval.
One question. What are the hours for the festa?
Yes, it's 12 to 6:00. So, we will start setting up, I believe, onsite at 8:00 a.m., and our cleanup crew will be done by 8:00 p.m., so it's about 12 hours. There will be some tents brought in the day before, which is why the permit is requested for 27th, 28th. Any other questions? Okay.
Neat, and it looks like we have a motion and a second. Councilors, cast your votes, please. Passes unanimously. Enjoy the event and let the children be in charge. All right, and with that, we will recess our council meeting, and we will now convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through E for consideration, unless a counselor would like to discuss an item individually. Hearing no request, I'll consider a motion, please. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion approved unanimously. Thank you, councilors. With that, we will adjourn OCMFA, and we will convene now as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where if it is clear, it looks like we have items A through C for consideration. I'll consider a motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, councilors. And with that, those items are approved unanimously. Thank you so much. That will then allow us to adjourn the OCPPA and reconvene our council meeting, which brings us to item 9, our consent docket. City Manager, is there any item in particular we're going to receive a presentation on?
No, we don't have any presentations.
Okay, and then to our city council members, is there an item you would like to hear additional information or something you would like for a separate vote?
Vice Mayor, I'd like a little more information on item AT.
AT. Adam Tom, got it. Thank you so much, Counselor Stone. And is there another item?
Can we vote separately on item BQ?
BQ, okay, and that's, let's see, Billy Quantum. Okay, like that, thank you. Is there another item from anybody? Wonderful. Well, let's take them in order, and we can head to Ward 4 about Ward 6. Who would be the one to give us a little bit more information, City Manager? All right, Director Miller, come on down, please.
Good morning. Debbie Miller, Public Works Director. This item is to install some chilled water air handling units. We brought in the OIA, and so this is to connect up the whole system together.
My question on it was, I originally thought this was going to be done in the spring, because I know that the myriad gardens is having to pay. Since the water got installed, I think they've been paying like 10,000 a month, but haven't been able to use it, so.
We have had issues getting the equipment in, and now that we have the remaining air handling units in, we can get those installed.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks for that memory there, Counselor Stone. I appreciate that. And then that will take us to item BQ. Did you want to say anything, Councilman? Okay, and with that, I'm sorry. Anything? Okay, just making sure. You just let me know. All right, with that, we'll have a vote. I'll look for a motion and a second, and this is to approve the item. So, if you're voting yes, you're voting to approve item BQ. Okay, and that passes 7 to 2, which then takes us, unless I am misunderstanding, to the remainder of the consent docket. All right, and then I'll entertain a motion and a second, please. Cast your votes, councilors, please. I'm so sorry, yes. Oh, I'm so sorry. Do I need to say that?
You're okay.
Okay, forgive me. So, that passes unanimously. I do want to just mention, I misspoke on the previous vote for item BQ. It passed 6 to 2, not 7 to 2. If we'd have one more person here, that would be our 9, so I'm speaking on memory from past council meetings. So, thank you, City Manager, for that clarification. And then that will take us to our concurrents docket under item 10, and we can take that with one motion as well, if we have it. Cast your votes, councilors. And this item passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, we are now on to item 11, which are items for individual consideration. It looks like we have a Ward 3, item A. It's an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval. This is PUD 2072, rezoning 7700 Southwest 74th Street, from AA Agricultural District to PUD 2072 Planned Unit Development District. And I will hand that over to Counselor Ayers, please.
All right, well, we do have a recommendation for approval, and it has been fully coordinated, so motion to approve.
Okay, I hear a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, so councilors, cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. Thank you all. Takes us to item B, and this is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval. And that's spud 1736, S-P-U-D, rezoning 1526 North McKinley Avenue, from S-P-U-D 829, Simplified Planned Unit Development District, to S-P-U-D 1736, Simplified Planned Unit Development District. And that takes us to Ward 6.
Yes, this is spud to allow three units on what used to be just a single-family house, so I will move for approval.
Wonderful. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, councilors. Motion passes unanimously, excuse me. And this takes us to Ward 7 with item C. It's an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, closing multiple portions of platted street right-of-ways surrounding blocks 9 through 16 in State Center Edition, north of East Britton Road, between North Oklahoma Avenue and North Lincoln Boulevard, and that will take us to Ward 7.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is just a simple request to close some of the right-of-way and streets so that there can be further development, and it comes with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, and I will also move for approval.
Wonderful, then it sounds like we have a motion. Do we have a second? And we do. Cast your votes, please. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. This takes us to item D, which is a public hearing regarding assessment role, year 2025 through 26 for the Downtown Business Improvement District, City of Oklahoma City Improvement and Special Services Assessment District Number 6. This is item 1 and 2, which also will lead to a resolution adopting and confirming an assessment role. Sounds like we have some people who have signed up to speak. Cindy, is it Murillo? Oh, come on. I remember you. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Good morning, Vice Mayor Cooper, City Manager Freeman, and esteemed city council members. I'm here today representing the Oklahoma City Bid Advisory Board of Directors. I must admit that I originally joined this Board of Directors about two years ago, because quite frankly, I didn't quite understand what these assessment fees were paid into. My boss and owner of, significant property owner in downtown Oklahoma City, represents a significant amount of property in downtown Oklahoma City. This Board of Directors is, the Bid Advisory Board, is made up of a combination of residents and property owners in downtown Oklahoma City. I'm a firm believer that if you don't quite understand something, become part of the effort to really gain a full understanding of where your tax dollars and assessment dollars are going. After two full years of being involved in this assessment board, I have a full understanding of where our dollars go. I want to commend the DOKC group, along with the Oklahoma City Green Team, for the wonderful job that they do of managing our downtown Oklahoma City streets. My goodness, the countless hours for the cleaning, the friendly team members that they have in order to maintain our downtown Oklahoma City streets. The bid provides six major benefits. I'm sorry, they represent six downtown districts in the areas of management, marketing, events, and, as I mentioned, our notable Green Team. This Bid Advisory Committee has approved our fiscal year 2026 budget, and therefore, we establish in our full 100% unanimous decision amongst us to provide the bid assessment structure that is in front of you today, and we hope you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Cindy? Wonderful. Cindy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For joining us this morning. Looks like we also have a resident who has signed up to speak, Shawna Berryman. Is there a Shawna Berryman here? I do not see them, so I'm going to, okay, so then we had, okay, that's the next item. Okay, so I'm going to let those hang out there. And then that takes us from the public hearing, unless there's anybody else. Okay, and that takes us to item 11D2, which is the resolution adopting and confirming an assessment role, year 2025-26, for the Downtown Business Improvement District, City of Oklahoma City Improvement and Special Services Assessment District Number 6, in the area known as downtown Oklahoma City, including Automobile Alley, Bricktown, City Center, Deep Deuce, Midtown, and West Village. This takes us to Ward 6 and 7. I don't know if there's anything from either counselor. Okay, cast your votes, please. We have a motion and a second. And with that, item D passes unanimously. Thank you all. This takes us to item E, and this is an ordinance on final hearing, adopting the assessment role, year 25 through 26, for Downtown Business Improvement District. Might that? Okay, so, I'm sorry, I was looking at something over here. And that's for the City of Oklahoma City Improvement and Special Services Assessment District Number 6, in the area known as downtown Oklahoma City, including Automobile Alley, Bricktown, City Center, Deep Deuce, Midtown, and West Village. Establishing the time and terms of payment of the assessments and other expenses, fixing penalties to be charged for delinquent payments of the assessment and for an installment thereof. Setting forth the tracts and parcels of land against which the assessments are being adopted, ratified, and levied. Directing the city clerk to prepare, sign, and attest, and record with the county clerk of Oklahoma County within 60 days of the publication of this ordinance, a claim of lien for any unpaid amount due, and assessed against a tract or parcel of land, and providing for an effective date as of the date of adoption and passage. Once more, Ward 6. My earlier confusion is I had two people who had signed up to speak under item D and E, so I don't know if people need to speak on this item as well. It's, again, Shawna Berryman, and it looks like Cindy, but it looks like you've spoke. Okay. Anything else from a counselor? And no Shawna? Okay, I will, do we need to have a vote?
Yes.
Oh, just making sure. I'll hear a motion or a second and/or? Looks like we got both. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you all for your consideration.
Vice Mayor, if I could too. Jennifer Nakayama is here with us this morning. She's President and CEO of DOKC Partnership, and they really are great partners with us, and I sure appreciate Jennifer's leadership. And as Cindy stated, there's just so many great things they do for downtown OKC. We always get compliments on how great the downtown looks, and it's a big part because of the DOKC partnerships. I just want to say thanks.
Thank you so much for taking time to join us. And then that will take us to item 11F, which is a public hearing regarding assessment role, year 2025 through 26, for our Stockyards City Business Improvement District, City of Oklahoma City Improvement and Special Services Assessment District Number 13. There's item 1 and 2 here, and I don't see anyone who's signed up to speak.
No one signed up.
Faces out there. Okay, just making sure. All right, so that takes us to the resolution adopting and confirming an assessment role for year 2025 through 26 for our Stockyards City Business Improvement District, City of Oklahoma City Improvement and Special Services Assessment District Number 13, for properties in and around the intersection of Agnew and Exchange Avenues, an area commonly known as Stockyards City. Ward 6, is there anything we need to add to that? Okay, I'll hear a motion for approval. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, councilors. Takes us to item 11G, which is our ordinance on final hearing, adopting and setting the assessment role, 2025 through 26, for our Stockyards City Business Improvement District, City of Oklahoma City Improvement and Special Services Assessment District Number 13, for, again, properties in and around the intersection of South Agnew Avenue and Exchange Avenue, an area commonly known as Stockyards City. Once more, establishing the time and terms of payment of the assessments and other expenses, fixing penalties to be charged in delinquent payment of the assessment, setting forth tracts or parcels of land against with which, excuse me, the assessments are being adopted, ratified, and levy. Directing the city clerk to prepare, sign, attest, and record with the office of the county clerk of Oklahoma County within 60 days of the publication of this ordinance, a claim of lien for any unpaid amount due, and assessed against a tract or parcel of land, and finally, providing an effective date as of the date of adoption and passage. Once more, if there's anything Ward 6 would like to add. Hearing no comment, I will consider a motion. There's a motion and a second for approval. Cast your votes, councilors, please. And item G passes unanimously. Thank you to our Stockyard friends for joining us and with city staff for working with our good friends at Stockyard and with downtown. Okay, that moves us to item 11H1, which is public hearing, our public hearing, excuse me, regarding dilapidated structures. And we have item A. Do we have any comments or questions on that?
And no one's signed up.
Can we do 1 and 2 together? Are they separate? I forget this part. I'm so sorry. 1 does not require the vote, because it's the public hearing. Thank you for that reminder, which takes us to the resolution, which does require a vote, declaring that this structure on item A is in fact dilapidated. Have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Item passes unanimously. Thank you so much, councilors. This takes us to item I, which is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there any comment from a counselor here? Of course, item C was struck previously. This moves us to the resolution on item 2, declaring structures unsecured. And I'll hear a motion and/or a second. Motion and a second. Cast your votes, councilors, please. A thrilling episode of item I. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. This takes us to item 11J1, which is the public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. We already saw earlier where we struck item A, but leaves item B, and now that takes us to, unless there's anyone signed up to speak, there is not under this public hearing, then that would take us to the resolution declaring buildings are abandoned under item 2. Do we have a motion and a second? We do have a motion and a second, excuse me. Cast your votes, councilors. Passes unanimously. That's item J. Thank you so much. Okey-dokey, that take us Okey dokey, that takes us, takes us, excuse me, to item 11K. And that is a resolution approving voting to accept the 13th amended Joint Chapter 11 Plan of the Reorganization of Purdue and its Affiliated Debtors in Participation in Case Number 1923649, pending in the United States Bankruptcy Court for the Southern District of New York, and authorizing, excuse me, authorizing and directing its legal counsel vote to accept the plan via master ballot or otherwise. B, approving voting to accept and participate in the governmental entities settlement agreement dated June 17, 2025, and authorizing the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City or the mayor's designee to execute the subdivision participation form for the City of Oklahoma City's participation in the governmental entity settlement agreement, and approval of the Purdue State Subdivision Agreement as it pertains to the plan and the governmental entity settlement agreement. And C, approving voting to accept and participate in the settlement agreements of Alvegen Inc., Amnil Pharmaceuticals Inc., Apotex Inc., Hicma Pharmaceuticals USA Inc., Indivior Inc., Mylan Pharmaceuticals Inc., Sun Pharmaceutical Industries Inc., and Zytus Pharmaceuticals. And authorizing the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City or the mayor's designee to execute the subdivision participation form for the City of Oklahoma City's participation in the settlement with Alvegen Inc., Amnil Pharmaceuticals Inc., Apotex Inc., Hicma Pharmaceuticals USA Inc., Indevior Inc., Mylan Pharmaceuticals Inc., Sun Pharmaceutical Industries Inc., and Zytus Pharmaceuticals. And finally, D, authorizing litigation counsel in the opioid litigation to negotiate and enter into a state subdivision agreement with the state through the Attorney General on behalf of the City of Oklahoma City with respect to the generic small secondary manufacturer settlement. Or we can enter into executive session with item B. I can talk about that Japanese 1953 ghost film if you would like. It is a wonderful film on the top films of all time, or we can hang out here.
Yes, sir. Sorry. We do have our attorney here today to give us an update in executive session.
Okay.
So we are asking for executive session on this one before the vote.
All right, well, then, an executive session is up for consideration. So with that, I will entertain a motion. And then we have a motion. We have a second. Cast your votes. And with that, we will move into executive session because it passes unanimously. At the heel of the docket, we will move into executive session in that. Okay, this takes us to 11L, a much shorter paragraph. This is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Authority approving settlement of the workers' compensation subgration claim, excuse me, related to the payment of medical bills paid pursuant to state law under workers' compensation against any proceeds recovered on behalf of William Deshield arising out of injuries sustained in an automobile accident, oh my gosh, if I could read, excuse me, on January 19, 2024. Or we can move into executive session if a counselor so moves.
And we aren't requesting executive session on this one. This one was also on the MFA docket.
I thought it looked familiar, so there's no executive session requested. So I will entertain a motion to approve the joint resolution. Motion and a second. Cast your votes, counselors. Motion approved unanimously. This takes us to item M, 11M, and this is a claim recommended for approval, or if there is a request to move into executive session, which I do not see it's recommended, but, okay. And I'll entertain a motion for approval. Have a motion. And we have a second. Cast your votes, counselors, please. And that passes unanimously. Item M does. All right. That takes us to item 12, and that is comments from council. Let's be a bit spicy this morning and start at Ward Eight.
That's great. On the weekend, sometimes I like to read articles about Oklahoma City, what's going on. And I came across a fun one this weekend that Oklahoma City ranks among the shortest commutes in the United States. We're number eight on the list with an average commute time of 22.1 minutes. And compare that with the number one longest, which is New York City, averaging 40.1 minutes one way. And so I think this leads to a quality of life issue. I think it leads to a better workforce productivity. And I think that's the reason we keep hearing about our economy growing. For example, this week it was announced that Oklahoma City will receive a $46.7 million medical research lab that will employ over 400 people with high-paying jobs. We just found out that there's going to be a new 200 million pediatric heart center. And then we know that one of our forensic labs is expanding to add 100 new additional workers. So as our economy keeps expanding, I think good things are happening in Oklahoma City, and will continue to happen because of our commute time. Just kidding.
Thank you, Counselor Stonecypher. This takes us to Ward Seven.
Thank you. I love the reverse order, by the way, Vice Mayor. I think that's great. If I get to speak before my friends on the other side, I'm like, yeah, that's great. Just kidding, just kidding. I did want to quickly say that we are hosting this evening a forum about affordable housing. Council members, the Vice Mayor himself and Councilwoman Hammond and I at Metro Tech. It's at 6:30. And I really want to thank our staff, Shannon Entz, Jamie Caves, as always, Debbie Martin, for all of their work in helping us host this event tonight. We hope to highlight ways that we can create more affordable housing and make housing more accessible to more people in our great city. So looking forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you, Counselor Pennington. I appreciate that. Ward Six? Nothing from Ward Six. Thank you so much. And then Ward Five? Nope, nothing from Ward Five. This takes us to Ward Four. Nothing there. Ward Three?
Thank you. I actually do have a couple of things today. And since we have an empty audience, it's just a great opportunity to share with you guys kind of a couple of things on the radar for Ward Three. We have a lot of development happening in Ward Three, as you guys know. Fastest-growing city, fastest-growing county, lots of movement. And so one of the things that I've noticed is we have a lot of hostility around planning and development right now. And part of that is we are communicating with our neighbors in a way that meets the minimum requirements of the law, but is not in alignment with the heart and intent of being a good neighbor. And so as we move forward and we look at PUDs and SPUDs, and we talk about really maximizing flexibility and innovation, there also is a responsibility to protect the character of an area and to minimize adverse impact on the neighboring areas. So I am asking, as we move forward, instead of waiting for people to find out at the last minute and feeling like they're under time pressure and they don't know what's going on, I'm asking our neighbors to post a large visible notice at the site, just a four-by-eight piece of plywood if it has to be, and host an information meeting, and really approach it from a collaborative framework to try to eliminate rumors and frustration and creating an oppositional environment. Instead, approaching it from a collaborative and neighbors, being a good neighbor framework. So hoping to see our submissions coming forward that they reflect coordination, communication, and a master development plan map on applications with discussion so that we can really be informed. And I know that there's a lot coming down the pipeline. So this is really just trying to be proactive and setting a framework for us to be successful together instead of having consternation and frustration. With that, in alignment with Councilwoman Pennington's recommendation following the data center that was put forward in Ward Seven last week and the notice yesterday that we will have notice of requests for a data center in Ward Three that is a much larger size. We are working, and I think that it's important for us to actively present that we're working on developing a task force that includes experts from energy, water, let's see, commerce, the Oklahoma Water Resource Board, Oklahoma City Water Trust, Department of Ag, and then hopefully having a resident from the area also be able to be involved with conversations with experts so that we can understand what are the considerations that we need to be having as we look at these zoning changes. So I think it's just important for us to be very communicative, that we are proactively moving forward to make sure that we have the right experts in the room to ask smart questions, and then to be able to have really good information meetings with the surrounding neighbors.
So I've got a group of staff that's working on this, that's reviewing this. The Alliance for Economic Development is helping to lead the way on this. I'm going to work with Councilwoman Avers and the mayor to have some discussions about who we might incorporate into that. But it's really more of like, as opposed to like a mayoral task force, it really is more of like a working group trying to look at this and review this because there are so many issues. I mean, as Councilwoman Avers was talking about, it deals with water use, its power, its land use, its economic development. It touches a lot of different areas. And we want to make sure that we're looking at that and proceeding carefully with that. We haven't had a lot of press on that right now, but I know it's happening all over the country. And it's definitely an issue that we want to look at and be on top of. So we're working on that to be able to get some information back to the council.
Very good. Two more things. September 25th, so Thursday, is our big town hall in the Yucatan District, which is our United, I'm looking around. It's at the United Methodist Church, and so love to have people there. We'll have city staffers there as well to be able to answer questions and talk in detail. And then just, it's funny that, it's funny seeing a little bit into this, different people's priorities. And so one thing that I've heard Councilwoman Cooper talk about a lot is really valuing the beautification of our city and cleaning up after ourselves. And I think that that's one of the things that we're working on in Ward Three right now, is just having a spirit of clean up, clean up, everybody do your share. You know, whether you're two or 98, whether you're a millionaire or you're barely making ends meet, that we all have a responsibility to clean up after ourselves and keep our area beautiful. So I mirror your sentiments there, Councilwoman Cooper, and we are working on that in Ward Three. And I'm excited to be sharing some stuff in the upcoming months of what we're doing to just make things better. All right, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Avers, and thanks for the kind words as well. This takes us to Ward One, and nothing from Ward One. Okay. Is that a council meeting that is moving to citizens to be heard? Oh, we have the executive session. All right, we're so close. We're going to hang out in an executive session now, and we will be back momentarily. Do we want to wait for others, or does this constitute a quorum? All right. Well, then I will consider a motion to approve item 11K1, the resolution approving everything I read earlier. Do you need me to read that again? Okay, because I can if you need me to. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, councilors. Passes unanimously, and that is a city council meeting that is adjourning one hour and 21 minutes, 11 minutes, if I could count. There we go. We did it. Thank you all so much. And with that, we will move to item 14 adjournment.
Good job.